So we are broadcasting and we'll have some remote audience as well, so we'll look for them on the screen as well. I'll defer to the chairs.
Okay, good evening everyone. Welcome to the planning board meeting for October 4th and we're also going to have a joint public hearing with the city council. To quickly go through the agenda, for the planning board side, we have the roll call. Then we have the joint public hearing, as I mentioned, on the zoning ordinance amendment. Permit indoor and outdoor recreational uses in a limited portion of the business park. Under general business, we have an opening for a representative to the community preservation committee. Approval of minutes for the September 20th meeting. And then we're going to have a general discussion of a variety of zoning matters, including planning assistance grant for Story Avenue, rezoning of the Story Avenue business area. The MBTA community's multi-family housing requirement that the city has to comply with. And a potential rezoning of the Easterly portion of the business park. And then any other updates from the chair or the planning board. So I will begin with the planning board roll call. Alden Clark?
Here.
Beth Delisle is not here yet, but we expect her.
Buck Pope?
Here.
Jamie Pennington is not going to be here. Heather Rogers?
Here.
Rick Tanger is here. Charlie Palmasano?
Present.
Jenna Lustine, one of our new associate members, is not here yet. And Brian Bell? Brian? Your first meeting today. Thank you for stepping up. Okay, I'll turn it over for you to open up your portion.
So I'd like to call to order the meeting of the subcommittee for planning and development for the city council. So I'm present and so is councillor Preston. Joining us tonight also is councillor McCoy and councillor Shan.
Okay, thank you. So this is the first, we're just beginning a public hearing on this matter. And so who is going to present the ordinance?
I'm happy to just give an overview.
Okay.
So just for the record, and I apologize, we have a remote audience and some of you may be familiar with this. We try to just speak aloud enough that the microphones here can pick up so that folks at home can also hear us. They don't sometimes pick up as well in the audience as with my computer. So we're just asking for you to speak aloud enough so that folks at home can hear. My name is Andy Ford and I'm the director of planning and development, so I'm just going to speak briefly to the proposed amendment. I have a couple of visuals to show briefly. So this is just a zoning map of the city and the area in question that we're talking about is down here. In this area. So I'm just going to zoom in on that to make a closer reference. So this is just a block of that area and underneath, and I have other visuals of this, but this is the business park area. There are two different sub-districts in the business park, the I-1 and the I-1B, which are the two purple areas that you're seeing. I'm not going to go through the whole background of all zoning districts here, I mean, all context, but we have a 40-yard or so-called smart growth district around the train station that allows some housing. But this business park has traditionally been, started with a history of only industrial, quote-unquote, industrial uses. But there's been some migration to other types of uses like medical office and some other types of uses. So with that in mind, the proposed change talks about on the Easterly side, this is the Henry Graff Jr. Road side. And the Parker Street section here, in that location, changing the allowances in that area. And then I'm just going to switch to another graphic here. This is just an aerial photograph or an ortho photograph of that area. It's a little bit harder to read this one, I think, in some ways, but just to illustrate briefly. This is Route 1 right here traveling through, and that's the traffic circle. This is Parker Street traveling through here, it takes that bend. This is Henry Graff Jr. Road, so that's this section, and in this section here is what we're talking about. The other section that's involved is New Pasture Way, which is right here. The parcel I've highlighted, I'll just, I'll show and I'll mention just in a brief in a second. But the proposed change essentially is allowing by special permit, something that isn't allowed in the zoning ordinance today by special permit. It's listed as NP or not permitted in the bulk of these districts on both sides of Henry Graff Jr. Road, the two purple areas that I showed. What this would allow is both indoor and as a separate category, outdoor recreational uses. Those two uses in the zoning ordinance were you know, nine months ago or so, going back about a year. An amendment was done to address recreational uses elsewhere, but did not address uses in this area. We did actually have some interest expressed in the two locations that I've noted here. Sorry for the little problem there. But this green area right here is just a location on New Pasture Way. There was some interest and that is involved in the area in question. And then this area right here, a collective of parcels that are fronting on Parker Street. Basically some potential interest in having pickleball. Somebody may even be here to speak to that tonight. So at any rate, interest in having a private, not necessarily a city-run facility, but a private pickleball operation. And whether those are indoor courts or outdoor courts could be beneficial to the city. And the business park is an employment center and an economic development base for the city. At the same time, there are various needs that the city has. I, just speaking for myself, see the benefits of the proposed amendment, which will allow this sort of indoor/outdoor recreational use as a category, pickleball being a subset of that. On this corridor in general, the Parker Street, Henry Graff Jr. Road, we happen to have interest a little bit further down on New Pasture Way of that same interest. So the conversation here is about that section. Any property that fronts on New Pasture, fronts on Henry Graff Jr. Road here, and to this intersection going towards Route 1, fronts on that section. So the question here is to allow this business park uses further out towards west side, to allow that in this area here. And I have seen that my perspective as planning directors, and I've seen that area migrate over time a little bit. There's been some other variety of uses in that area. And I don't necessarily see those in conflict with the business park and the embedded side of the business park at least. So to me, that's not inconsistent per se with that area or even potentially where we want that area to go in the future. Given the housing that's happening by the train station, there are benefits in my view of allowing and having a variety of uses that can serve both for folks who are living in the area or elsewhere in the city. But also at their employment center in the business park, to have things like a recreational facility in close proximity. So in general, while there's always a variety of detail to be discussed, and I would defer to the planning board as advisory and the council on that final decision here. But in my view, it's a beneficial amendment and there are some other particulars in here that we can discuss, like lot size requirements or parking requirements, things like that, finer grain. But that's in essence what this would allow, is a use that is not allowed today by special permit to be permitted by the planning board here by special permit if the amendment is approved. With that, I would ask if it's possible to allow, if there's any councils you wanted to speak to or?
Sure. I guess, is there anybody else who wants to speak as a proponent of this? Or is this, I mean, now we're getting up to questions and answers?
I think we have at least one councillor ready. Yeah. Will you ask him? Sure. Councillor, thank you.
Okay, so I am one of the co-sponsors of this and I just want to give you some background. The purpose of this proposal is to bring some consistency to this area. Along Graff Road, we have businesses that were established through use variances and their indoor recreation today. This will bring some clarity to any and all that want to invest here. The Graff Road and Parker corridor that we're talking about are now surrounded by smart growth residential users. We should use this corridor as the factual buffer to the true industrial part of the park, which is doing very well and is a job creator onto its own. But this buffer area is under attack from needs from residents that are now moving in, et cetera, along the way. That will lead to other expenses the city will have to incur, possibly like sidewalks, et cetera, that are not part of this plan, but that's for another conversation. We know that businesses and residences don't mix well. There's always something. Currently, Fort Rehab on the corner of Hale Street and Bucks Colton Drive, we've had 500 complaints in the last four years and they were all valid complaints. That said, the specifics within the use agreement of B1, B2, B3, to allow use 406, I think is consistent. I'm never a fan of putting anything in WMU except for Maritime. That's why we have 11 councillors. And I think the parking requirements are consistent with what we've done in the past. And what we've done in the past for outdoor should mirror what is there for indoor as well. Size of court, et cetera, along the way. I think it's pretty well laid out. And there are variances, but the variances are higher requirements, less requirements more than anything else. So that's why I signed on as a co-sponsor. I think there's a valid opportunity here for us to bring in some complementary businesses, the things that are there today. And so I look forward to your comments. Thank you.
I'm also one of the sponsors and I will say, when I got the phone call from Mr. Fisher saying he wanted to do this, I was all in because we've had so many residents, just speaking specifically of pickleball. I don't think pickleball necessarily works well in our residential areas either. So when we first started hearing about pickleball ages ago, it sounded like having it in the industrial park made the most sense because it's not going to bother folks. And when I got the phone call, it sounded like a great idea and I was proud to sponsor this one too. So, thank you.
So I guess at this point, you have a number of questions from the board or from the council about the proposal. Any questions?
One question, as far as limiting it to the area that you specified there. Is it the requirement of having the street frontage that enables that limitation to be corrected? Street frontage and vehicular access, you know, to make it clear that like the frontage is typically required for a use, you know, of the property. But in this case, also the physical driveway access off that street, to be clear.
Thank you.
Just to verify what you pointed out about the two properties that expressed interest. We talked this afternoon, I just want to make sure I'm clear on this. The interest in the Parker Street property is for outdoor recreation.
My understanding includes potentially both indoor and outdoor, whereas the other one on New Pasture is potentially there's only indoor.
Thank you, because I made some proposed changes. Okay. I want to make sure I understood that. Yes.
Yeah, I had a question, two questions. One, under, putting up K. Why is there an and/or there between, it says Graff Road, New Pasture Way, and/or Parker Street?
So that would be my words, but I think, but only just, we do have some properties that come to that corridor that have fronted on both. So just wanted to make it, you want to say where's that?
No, it could be one.
So you could be, you could be on, having frontage on Henry Graff Jr. Road, be in the corner, and also have frontage on Parker Street. So it shouldn't affect anything, I would think, as far as your concerns perhaps, you know. But it's just the fact that, taking into account all possibilities, that you could be in any way fronting on those streets. Either separately or in combination, two streets at the same time.
Okay. If I could, a second question. So why not extend this down Parker Road as it passes beyond the intersection of Henry Graff and Parker? A cursory search of the internet tells me that beyond there is, you know, physical therapy, CrossFit, chiropractic. Why not extend further down?
Sure. And this actually is, it's a good question. It's a good debate to have in general. Generically speaking, in crafting this, in order to my extent anyway. My sense has been that the primary aspect of the corridor that might be a question here for this type of use, this used category or the fixture, would be this transition between the Route 1 traffic circle and that 40-yard district. And then heading up towards Low Street here mainly because that's where we see some of that sort of continuity of a path of a corridor. It's certainly, as you point out, very reasonable to conclude that there are other uses, you know, sort of down here or even elsewhere in the general vicinity. Those could be proposed as, you know, an adjustment here to the scope that's involved here. I just wasn't initially feeling that that was the primary corridor that's involved. We could certainly have, for instance, a discussion about whether on the other side of the street here or down here. Generically speaking, the only thing I was trying to consider here on balance of land use issue that I have seen in my time here has been some concern from the business park owners, you know, further maybe towards the western side, that commercial traffic generating type uses aren't sort of making their way wholly to the business park and creating a lot of conflict between traffic and trucks and so forth. So that being the case, I would primarily think the Easterly side, but perhaps that could go further south or otherwise in here. And that is a reasonable, you know, debate to be had as well.
Yeah, if I could just further comment on that. So, you know, it strikes me again, just a simple Google search. Search, you could find, you know, churches, gyms, CrossFit, Metro Rock, all kinds of physical therapy. And there, this is clearly a business park and not an industrial park.
Agreed.
I don't disagree that there is heavier industrial more to the west. That's, you know, without question along the corridor of Henry Graff, especially and as it turns, you know, to Parker. It's odd there, but so Henry Graff, Parker as it moves east, but Parker also as where it is the extension of Henry Graff. It seems to me that all of those should be available to this sort of use.
And all the work over to the council, the planning board, or where to go, I would agree with that conceptually. I, you know, again, I was thinking of this as sort of primary, but this is built off of it just and perhaps just as much. And I certainly would not object to that. I would see that as reasonably consistent with the argument for this section. So I don't have any, you know, object to that myself, of course, to be clear. I would be on board with that if that was something.
I could just add, since later tonight, we're going to be talking more broadly about the business park and about the proposal we're bringing forward to rezonate the whole Easterly section of this park to a new business district. And you're certainly welcome to stay.
My point being is we can load.
It is, it is a big issue that you're bringing up and it's, and I think it's an important issue. And actually, can you pull up the graphics that I sent over today? No, I was going to say, I want to know about the recreational uses.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, I'm. Did you add it up?
So, no, I had, sorry, the business park, Story Avenue.
No, I had one that had all the parcels highlighted.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, give me just one moment.
While you're looking at that, I mean, it is a broader conversation, you know, as I looked at this. And frankly, I started going down this road because, you know, I work out of fuel six days a week. I was sort of like, how is this not already, you know, permitted in this zone? So when I started to research it, it really strikes me that
It's an evolution.
It's a business park. It's not an industrial park. We should really look at broadening it as a whole.
So this is a really good graphic to show you. All of the uses that are highlighted in yellow, we may not be able to leave them long later on, but but these are all uses that are not typical industrial park uses.
Yeah.
And it's the whole, as I say, it's the whole eastern portion of the business park. And so you, can you back up one slide? So the slide that the parcel sort of highlighted in yellow are the parcels that would be affected by this zoning change. And so that if you move forward again, you can see it again, that how that, how this is an area that is basically has evolved. And it evolved over many years. Some of them were variances, some of them were special permits. Some of them were things like the 40-yard zoning, the lot of the housing near the train station. So it really is a big issue and that's why I will be talking about that later tonight. Or you could point to it.
I would argue that it extends to Low Street too. I mean, you have optical and bright horizons, you know, that. But yeah. On the meeting this week.
Okay. If nobody's answered your question, but I can open up for the public, the public hearing for public comment and then we can come back. So if anybody would like to speak to this, please come to the microphone, the podium, and state your name and address and, you know, speaker. And I expected a lot of people to say, yes, I agree. So you can just say that.
Hi, good evening. I'm Bill Fisher, Newburyport resident residing at 14 Burgo Terrace, the co-founder of Newburyport Brewing Company. I'm here in support of the zoning ordinance amendment to permit indoor and outdoor recreation use in the business park. The nice thing about this, it isn't a fundamental zoning change. So I think, you know, we've got an opportunity here to allow recreational uses that don't exist today in this section of Newburyport. And the benefit of the the benefit of this zoning amendment extends not only to Newburyport residents, but also to the community as a whole. I think, you know, we do have a vested interest in this, obviously. But, you know, it's nice to see from a business perspective that there are opportunities for businesses such as ourselves to offer year-round recreational opportunities to the community when it's 90 degrees and sunny or 20 degrees and snowing. I think the nice thing about this part of the business park is the businesses are suited for this type of use. There's plenty of square footage, there's plenty of parking. There's high bay warehouse space. So I think recreational uses such as indoor pickleball or bocce or whatever the city of Newburyport chooses to permit is an ideal use for this area. So I applaud Newburyport for supporting businesses who are thinking a little bit outside the box. And, you know, I encourage the city to pass this amendment. And I think it's a beneficial change for the city and its residents and also everybody who uses the city from the community as a whole. So thank you very much for your time.
If we have any other speakers, let us know. For the record, we have councillor Bullman with us remotely as well.
Come forward, yes, please.
Good evening. My name is Steve Pietrow. I'm a Westernbury resident, but spend the majority of my time here in Newburyport coaching pickleball. I also have a pickleball consulting business and I really just wanted to do two quick things. One, first of all, thank Director Poit, Jennifer Blanchett from the zoning commission. And obviously Heather Shan, who I believe is on the phone, and the other city council. Oh, Heather, we've never met. Oh, thank you. I don't have my glasses on, I can't see that. So thank you and your colleagues, the other council members for supporting this. I think it is needed here in the city. I also commend the city on the work they did this year over at Cashman Park that has really helped. I happen to know nine sort of people here, so I can tell you definitively, they're all pickleball players and that's why they're here. So I am the other interested party that you referred to leading a group, hopefully trying to be an indoor and outdoor facility to provide clarification to the facility. So thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody else who wishes to speak? Yes.
Hi, I'm James Jones, Two Wheels Lane. Been a resident of Newburyport and have been involved in pickleball since 2017. I'm the United States Pickleball Association ambassador to Newburyport. And we have worked hard to provide opportunities for pickleball play here in the city. And we are grateful for the work that we have done with a number of councillors, with a number of members in the audience and all of the avid pickleball players here and beyond. I represent over 300 Newburyport residents that play pickleball. And we have discussed this with councillor McCoy, with a number of other ones, about the interest in looking at opportunities to expand, yet be conscious of the neighborhoods. I believe that this really addresses those issues. And while we're not directly involved, Newburyport Pickleball as a group, we really encourage this. We think this amendment is very beneficial to the community and for the health and vibrancy of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, that's, if nobody else wishes to speak at this point, I'll close. Did you want to speak? I'll close the public. I'm going to read it back. Read it back. So, discussion.
Does anyone have one? I didn't see any hands. Yeah, we did not see any hands. Yeah.
Okay. Ready, discussion about this? Questions? Is there? Councillor?
I always want to know the most, say, but, you know, I think it's interesting on the council, I somehow found myself to be the queen of pickleball despite the fact that I have never played. But I would like to play, but then, but I do, I have said this so many times, I'll say it again here. I'm very passionate about the fact that every taxpayer should have a right to play this sport. And, you know, there's a lot of this discussion about tennis versus pickleball and not having pickleball in certain places. And I understand that it can be loud. Again, I've not played, but I do hear this. But I feel very passionately that it is, you know, a very upcoming sport. It takes five seconds on the internet to know that. It seems to be exploding everywhere. And I think we do need to find places for people to play pickleball in the city. And I think this is a very elegant solution to not having it be something that could be considered a nuisance to the residential areas, while still having it within the city limits and providing that service to the taxpayers. So I personally think this is wonderful. I think we rarely can find such simple solutions. It's almost impossible to find simple solutions, but this does seem like a simple solution to me. Again, especially in the context of the fact that the former business park, or sorry, the former industrial park has really developed into industrial park. Good lord. The former industrial park has really developed into a business park. As we have developed, you know, the village that we're trying so hard to do around the train station and 103 Boston Way. As that expands westward, I think this is a wonderful way for us to give that area of the city more of a village feel and while also creating a solution for pickleball. So I am two hands and two feet up on this.
Thank you. Anybody else? I have a couple of questions, a couple additional questions that I didn't think of until tonight. This would be considered a separate principal use, correct?
Correct.
So in that case, would the parking requirements be added?
Correct. However, there is the ability through a special permit provision in the ordinance for the planning board to look at what we call shared parking for off-peak hours. Obviously, there'd have to be a demonstration that those uses are happening off-hours, you know. But there could be a shared parking arrangement and here, pursuant to the text of the amendment as proposed, or I think you and I discussed this earlier. Another section of the zoning ordinance where the special permit is reviewed, the planning board can also look at the parking requirements in context of the specific courts and proposal for recreational uses to determine that that's fine tuned, to make sure that there's essentially enough parking provided onsite so that it is not putting it on the streets inappropriately. So in general here, it could be either a shared provision to reduce and sort of see it a combination based on off-hours where the lot could be empty anyway, or it could be a more restrictive requirement in the board to pursue the application to determine that it's enough.
And then the other question I had is, it seems to be that in some cases, this could be an accessory use rather than a principal use. For example, if Newburyport Brewing wanted to put a small bocce court outside, it's just, it's just one little bocce court. We wouldn't be asking them to come for a special permit, I believe?
Well, I am going to defer to our zoning administrator. However, in general, I think there's an argument to be made that a small element like that, particularly if it's done on an occasional basis, would be reasonable to interpret and to apply that way. But when you do wholesale, when you make a wholesale change and you're really going, without going into the weeds of legal debates over the thresholds, when you're doing something that's disproportionately, you know, it's really at that point arguably not an accessory component of any type. We would, I think, have to categorically call it, you know, this new number, this new use category, an entirely different use. And therefore needs to be permitted under that use category specifically.
You know, they have a quantum yield, so that's clearly not a principal use.
Correct, correct.
So it seems like you could do that, it's quite a brewery or a pub or something like that. And, you know.
Yeah. Sure. Yeah, in general, this is, you know, I, again, I would like Dannerberg, she wants to speak this as well. But I think, you know, this is intended to grab those larger uses that can create the type of land uses that we need to be considering, you know, any concern about in one neighborhood versus another.
I was just thinking, is that a, that Olympic sport? But I agree, I think that there's general support for this and strong support. It's just a matter of coming up with some of the details for the parking perhaps.
Oh, if I could, just to be clear, because I know that the comment was made earlier and I have discussed with a few others before this, talking about this particular amendment in the area involved. Sidewalks are a routine issue that we talk about in Newburyport regardless of the neighborhood, I would say. Bike connectivity and so forth. So just to be clear, it'll be, it's obviously a discussion both with the council for various areas of our permit right away, as well as for the planning board, particularly when a discussion both with the council for various areas of our permanent way, as well as for the planning board, particularly when they review a site plan or a permit application like the zoning board appeals. Uh, we typically nowadays, uh thankfully due to some more recent amendments to ordinance, we try to take into account new sidewalk connections, like, you know, bike path connections or bike racks, things like that, to make sure that we're not customizing our community only for the automobile. Uh, Newburyport is a walkable place, and we want to encourage uh new village areas that were were sort of redeveloping, like the train station area or even Story Avenue. Uh, like the downtown, we want it to be walkable, we want to make sure there's connectivity. So uh, just to be clear, from my perspective, like, I agree that that's very important. I also think that that can be very well addressed by the board's review of the application to make sure they don't want to give it site in the context of what can be physically done. Uh, there are the best possible sidewalk connections or bike path connections or bike racks provided for folks, that sort of thing. So um, that I think is an issue that can be addressed very well through that review process.
If nobody else has, I don't want to, I don't want to supersede what anybody else wants to say, but I do have some proposed amendments uh that are very technical and the details which Charlie mentioned. Um, so.
You want to go through those line by line?
Yeah, I guess, let's look at the, you know, this this stuff here. So uh, when we go down to no, actually no, I'm sorry, just look at the table, because I can read.
Oh, the table?
I can.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
So right now, there's a, there's a footnote K for both of these uses. And if you just slide up a little bit, you'll see footnote K. And it says, if used and permitted by special permit, only on properties with frontage and visual access from Henry Graff Jr. Road, New Pasture Way and or Parker Street between the intersection with Henry Graff Jr. and two hundred East River, one. And I felt, looking at this, that I that there's a distinction to be made. So I would, my first proposal is to separate two uses. And the first use, the outdoor um health and recreational facility. My proposal would be for the footnote to not include New Pasture Way, because this is a larger scale use and these are very tight lots there. And also I feel that uh, we don't want to be encouraging a lot of traffic going down New Pasture Way, which is a, not a very wide street, it's a dead end and it has its own traffic problem. So um, that would be my first suggestion. And I also think that it should end not at Route One, but at the uh commuter rail station and and the rail trail. Because those parcels on Route One really aren't conducive to being outdoor recreation facilities. Um, so the wording that, you can look at the wording on the screen, and the wording that I would use for outdoor health and recreation facilities would be used permitted by special permit, only on properties with frontage and visual access from Henry Graff Jr. Road and or Parker Street between the intersection of Henry Graff Jr. Road and the NBK commuter rail station slash River City Rail Trail. Otherwise permitted, otherwise prohibited in I one and I one D. So that'd be the first, the first footnote.
So it would, uh, just to be clear, it would stop essentially here? And this section of New Pasture would not be included?
Would not be included for outdoor recreation. Okay. Then moving on, we have a new footnote for indoor health and recreation facility, which would be footnote L, which would be exactly the same as what I just read, except we would include New Pasture Way. So that's the the first one. And and um, why don't I go through all of them and then we can have discussion about any of these. But then if we go down to the, yep, there you are. Um, I was, my first one is under outdoor health and recreation facilities. I didn't think twenty one, twenty thousand square feet were for outdoor uh health and recreation facilities, particularly if you're talking about pickleball courts or tennis courts or whatever. So my suggestion is either to delete that content to twenty thousand within the I one and I one D districts, or to increase it to a hundred thousand, which is basically two and a half acres. Um, just it seems to me more sense in terms of the scale of the facilities we're talking about. Then under indoor health and recreation facilities, um, I would suggest increasing the height allowance to forty feet and increasing the lot coverage uh allowance to forty feet. Because that's more, you know, we're trying to get more uh intensive use. This is an industrial park.
Right.
Many of the buildings there are already forty feet, so we can, we could allow that. Uh, then under parking requirements, um, I would like to delete the section that says depending on the size and nature of proposed court or other games later, because we already have a provision in the special permit uh section of our ordinance, the general special requirements, as said, we can increase the parking requirements anyway. So this, by adding that phrase, it almost implies we're restricting ourselves to only those reasons. And I think we should be treating it the same as other special plans. So I would just say, no, if running a special permit for the sheets, the plan would be increase these parking requirements. I don't think that's needed because it's already in zoning ordinance, but I know that you wanted to have that just as a guideline. And then the final thing uh is not in the ordinance at all. Um, and I was thinking about this in the outdoor, we have to check that, but we go back to the dimensional table. So we've got the front side and rear yards. But those only apply to buildings. They don't apply to courts, you know. So um, I felt that in order to protect adjoining uses, we should have some setback for the the courts. And so what I'm suggesting is to add a new section sixteen in the ordinance, uh, which is later on in the ones. And we would read, any outdoor recreation facility shall be setback from all property lines by one half of the required yard on the adjoining property or twenty-five feet, whichever is greater. This provision shall not apply to the outdoor recreation facility that is accessory to a single-family or two-family dwelling or that is treated as a building for setback purposes because it is enclosed for portions of the year by retractable and more imposing. You can talk about that. Basically, if you have, we've talked about that, we actually talked about that and we're talking about that. The other one, the racket club. And uh, that if it's, if it's partially enclosed, we treat it as a building. So we use the setback to the zoning district for the setting. But this would uh at least, and the reason I said setback from the um, the yard, required yard of the adjoining company is that it's really the adjoining use that you want to protect. So if you have a residential use next to it, then whatever that might be, uh, if if the setback requirement is um fifty feet, then the setback requirement here would be twenty-five. This, that's what I'm trying to get at. So those are my, they're all very technical things, but as I went through the orders, I really felt it needed to be jumped on. So, uh, any questions for that?
And they need to process that.
Yeah.
Uh, Rick, I'll leave it to you, but did you want to speak to uh the graphic that you showed a moment ago, or do you, this one here, do you want to speak to the lot sizes uh in the sense that um, you know?
Yeah.
Or the, or the new pasture component? Now, this, this is the section of parcel that would not be eligible with a close change, right?
And it was actually only, it's not all of them, it's only the, the second parcel we end of the third.
Oh, yes, sorry, sorry.
Yeah, so there's, there's, and I don't, I don't see that there's actually a uh, a compelling argument to basically take down those buildings and replace them with outdoor recreation, which is what you have to do. So I I think we want to protect that as a business area, but indoor recreation certainly could make sense there, but I don't think there's any reason to think of that for outdoor recreation. That, and that was, you know, before I started getting into the weeds of this, I really had a lot of concerns about this proposal because I felt that it was potentially hollowing out the business park. Um, but I I can see this now as as something that has potential advantages. Um, but I'd like to make sure that the the use and dimensional ordinance makes sense.
Thank you.
So sorry, maybe I do have one question. Are you excluding New Pasture Road?
From in, from, from out. Keeping it random, because I can't see an outdoor recreation, you know, happening there, unless you, because you have to tear down buildings.
Yeah, okay.
Do you know the relative size of some of those parcels?
Yeah.
You want to increase to a hundred thousand?
So the parcels that are, a new pasture, I think many of them are one and a half acres. So we would not, we're only, I'm only suggesting increasing, well, not suggesting increasing anything, I'm suggesting reducing, uh, less, less reduction. Um, so right now, the department's four and a half acres. So I'm suggesting we could reduce it to two and a half acres. Uh, which really takes in the parcel that we're talking, basically, there's the recreation parcel that you're talking about, the part of Parker and Parker.
Right, yeah, here.
As you, you told me that was somewhere over a hundred thousand.
Uh, and combining the parcels about four hundred fifty thousand square feet all along, yeah.
Yeah, so it's way, way, yeah, I mean, we've, uh, it seems, you know, when you look at this map and look at the existing use of that, trying to see places where an outdoor recreation facility would fit in as a principal use. There's probably only one parcel, one, one, one parcel. It's the one, the one we're looking at. And, you know, I would, I would just rezone that parcel, so we can't do that.
Well, it could be done with good reason, uh, but one might argue that the corridor, a larger corridor could, right, yeah.
Yeah, and could, could one not hard? I would like to perq you, that at least one of those parcels could be an indoor pickleball facility with an, an outdoor pickleball court on the same lot at the same time. Ie, you don't have to tear down a building to do that. You have an indoor court in the building, the existing building, you would just want to put one on, maybe two could fit there, but you would want to have that outdoor access as well.
Well, I think, I think the problem is we haven't done that analysis. You know, we're kind of, we're kind of at this point picking things out of the air. When you think about that, if you look at one of those parcels on New Pasture Way, um, you, you add an indoor facility as a principal use, and that has its own parking requirements. And then you add the outdoor recreational facility as a third principal use, perhaps? You know, the, the, the business use, the indoor use, so we've got two special permits and you're adding two sets of parking requirements. I don't think it should, you know, it, but we don't, we haven't done the analysis. I would like, I would like to have actually more analysis showing this, but I think we just, we don't have that yet.
I would agree with that. I mean, you, looking at the racket club, right? I mean, they were initially an indoor place, they had the parking. They were able to put several, I don't know, I could guess four or five pickleball courts there. Um, and I, I I would hate to see us exclude that use if there was the potential for that use without taking down though.
Uh, I'll leave it to you, of course. I I might suggest there might be a middle ground between that, which is perhaps allowing as a subset of the indoor, uh, you know, component where there's an allowance for up to X courts or some limited, you know, proportion with that indoor use, so that you've been allowed that by discretionary review by the board without necessarily calling it the entirely different category, almost to your earlier suggestion, that there's a, you know, an ancillary component that could be added. So perhaps that could be allowed or permitted as part of the review for an indoor facility recognition, but they might have enough space to put a couple of courts outside. Um, but without necessarily triggering a wholesale change, which might be, might address a little of your concerns, I will leave it to you, but. Right out there.
I, again, if, if we, if we knew, if we had more analysis of the parcels that are out there, I'd be more comfortable with it, with, with kind of changing that whole thing. I also, I also do have a concern about, about making New Pasture Road a destination, dead end road like that, a destination for lots of people coming in and out. It shifts, you know. I, I don't know, I don't know how many people are going to be using this facility, but it sounds like it's a very popular event, you know, um, active. So having people go back and forth, we already know that we have issues with, you know, school, school liable consumption strikes in the area as well. Um, I don't know. I'm open to, you know, open to other ideas and questions.
Well, maybe you accomplish your, your goal by, uh, you know, establishing the setbacks, the parking restrictions, and therefore you could include the New Pasture Road area, but the restrictions may, uh, you know, by virtue of the fact that they have these limitations, would preclude them from being able to uh, build it, but at least we wouldn't have to come back here and maybe reconsider uh, including that area uh in the future if somebody proposed that.
Council problem?
Uh, Council, right, ten to ten. So, um, if we had a vacant lot, how big of an indoor facility would you be able to build on that? Um, just from, you know, just trying to understand the, the, the requirements.
Right. Well, it, it depends on the size of the problems, it depends on the size of the lot. So the bigger the lot, I guess, the bigger the, the bigger the facility. You're constrained primarily by the, by the setbacks, which are, are they fifty, fifty, fifty?
Correct. I, I would also note, there's a fair amount of wellens in this park, which also would preclude a fair amount of, you could sometimes see near a photograph, but a fair amount of parcels are taken up by wellens that can't be altered either, so.
No, I just got my, I just got my soccer hat on. I'm trying to think of what a soccer field would look like if they were to build a, uh, you know, a typical indoor soccer facility to two or three fields. Um, whether that's even feasible on any of the lots we're discussing with, with the, with the current restrictions.
Well, again, if there were, your, your first phrase was if there were a vacant lot, and there aren't very many, um, so what you'd be end up, end up doing is either repurposing a building somehow and expanding it, or um or, you know, demolishing the building and combining two lots.
That's not cost effective.
No, it's not cost effective.
I, I think that's a good, you know, it's a, a good argument, which I think you had hinted to a little before. No one's going to demolish the building, presumably, no one's going to demolish the value of the building, even if they recreate a new one, to create outdoor space, which wouldn't necessarily be as profitable for them either. So we wouldn't, it's not necessarily um, that we would see it some proposed here versus other places potentially because of that. Like you said, there are buildings on these lots, whereas uh, perhaps you have a location, there are less buildings to relocate.
I mean, I, I, again, I look at New Pasture Road and I, um, I just don't see a feasible location for a, an outdoor recreation facility. So my question is, why would we even think about zoning it for that? Um, and we want to, I think we still want to keep um a fair amount of the business and industry in the, in the park. So we don't want to have our, our planning documents say, well, we can get rid of those replacements. Yeah.
I, I'm not opposed to propose change per se. Uh, but I, I see, you know, rationale on both sides, so I'm just to be clear, I'm not opposed to that change per se. I, I think it's more likely that we're going to see something indoor there, if I think we do. So I'm, I'm as concerned about that per se, one way or the other.
Well, would you be opposed to an outdoor court as, as a, a follow-up in a secondary use to a principal use?
Yeah.
So you could have an indoor pickleball facility, you could have, to your point, you could have a couple of outdoor courts adjacent to that, and, but that really doesn't constitute a principal.
Yeah, and again, whether, whether you could actually fit it in there is another question.
That's another question.
You have to pave more parking.
That's another question, for sure.
Yeah.
And, and we wouldn't have to change the language for the, um, for the reuse.
Uh, no, I, well, I would suggest that we add some, if, depending on where you want to go, with the recommendation from the planning boards, and I, if you were to recommend that, that would be incorporated, I would recommend specific language to be added to clarify that component. Uh, but also just to note again, that, that there's a, a reason for discretionary reviews, which is give the board the ability, because you can't codify everything in the text of an ordinance uh, that may come up, uh, you know, it'd be a, it'd be a long book. So um, there is a discretionary review that could allow some things like that to be taken a look at. It may be something that you want to address by not allowing in the first place, but um, sometimes allowing by discretionary review, allowing the board to determine on a case by case if something fits on site.
Yeah, so, you know, after this discussion, I'm thinking maybe we just leave New Pasture Road in. I, I think it's never going to happen as a principal use, but if we leave it in, then nobody's concerned with leaving it out. I think it's, I think it's, it's a fantasy.
I, I would tend to agree because of the building space, but yeah.
Yeah, so um, I appreciate the discussion. I'm going to add a little wrinkle here. Um, the principal um, um, use is going to be a business we've never seen before, it'd be a pickleplex. And that will be a combination of indoor-outdoor type of scenario. So the accessory use will probably be food or drink or something like that, that will enhance that. And so um, I, I'm okay with the, the changes here, but, you know, instead of saying that we think a building that's doing something now is going to add, you know, both an indoor and an outdoor pickleball, so now we have three distinct uses, the main use, um, the secondary use, and, and now a third potential use on that, which would be additive. Um, you, you know, opening this up particularly pickleball is, the main use is, is a pickleplex, and that is a definition now uh elsewhere around the country. Uh, and it comes with its own, it's similar to, you know, mixed bag, uh, indoor-outdoor facility. So I think your, the conversation um is worthwhile, and I think you're, um, uh, so I can appreciate that, but I think you can cover it both ways, and we don't always have to think of it um, linearly like we do here. It just, it's, you go to see it coming the other way.
Except that, you know, we're not proposing to have a pickleplex here, we're proposing to have then the, the zoning, the zoning recommendation is for an outdoor recreation facility or and or an indoor, so we would have two, two principal uses. If it were, if it were a pickleplex, um, it would be two primary uses, and there'd be two separate special permits with two separate parking requirements.
Both of which could have an ancillary component, say, of service, or, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? If not, we could close the public or separate public hearings. And at least the planning board, your committee could move on to deliberations, the planning board can move on to deliberations. So um, I guess at this point, I would um entertain a motion on the planning board to close the public hearing.
So who will close the public hearing?
The second. Thank you. Uh, I will, um, call the rule and I don't want Brian to feel left out. But as an associate, you only go in a special permit. Okay, all in fine.
Yes.
Definitely.
Yes.
Well, cool.
Yeah.
Kevin Rogers.
Yeah.
And Charlie from the side?
Yes.
Cause you vote now.
Again.
And Victoria, yes, so the public hearing is closed. Thank you.
So the, uh, the, the city council subcommittee on paying involvement will, uh, also entertain a motion to close our portion of the public hearing. And I will second that, so, uh, that's complete on our end as well.
So are you going to, what is your pleasure? You want to stay for deliberations? Are you gonna vote tonight to move it forward or? Um.
Uh, yes, I don't see there's any reason to delay this from, from our point of view, from the council point of view. Um, we'll wait to hear what your recommendation is. It's subject to your recommendation. Yeah.
All right, so a motion to recommend ordinance one sixty to the full council for approval.
Subject to the.
Subject to planning.
Now, I'll second that. You are, yes?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Okay, so then we'll try to wrap this up. Um, so I've gone through my proposed changes to the ordinance. I know you, do you wanna put that up on the screen and each of the, the board? Looking, not to put my changes, proposed changes up. Um, so there we go. So, uh, I would like, if, if nobody disagrees with the proposed changes, I would like to have a motion to recommend with those changes and just, do you have a question on it?
One, one good thing, given, given if we, uh, you, your changes had the two different footnotes K and L.
Yes, we, we can combine them now.
Okay.
But so we would not, we would not have.
But you changed the language a little bit, but I liked your language.
So, well, the only, the only change, language change would be now to just add the words otherwise prohibited.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make.
So, so it would basically be the second A. Um, so it would be that, that language. Including New Pasture Road, so that would be the first one. Then moving on, uh, what is your, what is your, is there, is there a preference for the minimum lot area for outdoor health and recreation facilities?
Sorry, Rick, back to the first one. Would we add back in?
We're adding, so, so it would only be the second one. It has New Pasture Road. And you would not have two separate footnotes anymore. Um, it would be one footnote that applies to both outdoor and indoor. And the only change from the draft that has been proposed is to add that last sentence, but otherwise prohibited. Um, so then in the table of dimension regulations, if we are going to, um, if we are going to consider outdoor health and recreation facilities as a principal use on New Pasture Road, I would suggest that the number be changed not to a hundred thousand, but to sixty thousand, which is roughly an acre and a half, which is typical of a lot of the lots on New Pasture Road. Um, and then, uh, again, increase the height allowance to forty feet and increase the light coverage allowance to forty percent. And then, you know, the parking requirements, reading that uh, sentence depending on the size and nature of the proposed court or their game plan areas, and adding that, that special setback for non-building outdoor recreation facilities that are not associated with a single or two family. So are there any, is, would anybody have any concerns with those? And if not, would somebody make a motion to recommend the ordinance with those changes?
Can I just ask one question? Sorry. So, an additional thing, the street frontage for the outdoor facilities, it's two hundred. Does that seem still like a reasonable?
I think the changes are reasonable and I think I would.
So I have a question when you're gonna go from a hundred thousand to sixty thousand. Do we know if any of the, um, properties on New Pasture are any adjacent properties of the same person?
I don't know.
I don't know.
I, I, I didn't check that, just before I get in.
It's the only reason I'm saying it. It's because if, if this is something, you know, that we want to sit long term and, and be agreeable, perhaps if that were the case, that one hundred thousand could almost come into play like long term. So why, why scale, I guess, why scale it back if, if a lot as they are now couldn't handle it anyways per zoning? I don't know, just a second. If, if a parcel were to be combined at some point.
But we're reducing, reducing the minimum. So, so if the parcel is.
Well, the minimum.
Yeah, so we're not cutting down the maximum scale.
I was thinking it was maximum, sorry. Okay, okay.
Sad ask, sad ask. So, um, if that's the case, could I add a motion and, uh, and I think substituting sixty thousand instead of the twenty, instead of a hundred thousand?
I agree. I will move to, to that with the, uh, amendments.
Is there a second?
Sorry.
Uh, any further discussion? Uh, then I will move on to roll call. Actually, I don't even need a roll call board.
You don't, because there's nobody.
There's nobody remote, okay. Uh, all those in favor? Any approach? Uh, did you?
Can I be, can I be neutral?
I mean, I just haven't thought through the whole thing yet, that's why. Was that?
Present, but present.
I, I, I'm all present.
You don't, you, you, you have a.
I, I, I just haven't done all the calculations. See, I mean, I'm not as quick as you guys.
Okay, so we have, uh, one, two, three, four. Five, five plus one.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. So we're done with that. Yeah, guys, you can call me anytime.
Oh, yes.
Second, all those in favor?
I.
Hi.
I promise I will.
So the next item on our agenda. So we next item is the approval minutes of September twentieth. I just had one typo correction. Did anybody have any, um, corrections on those detailed minutes?
It was your typo.
Uh, it was a path, it tends to show that in person.
Was that the seven minute meeting?
Yeah. Okay, so, uh, so to add motion to approve.
I moved to approve the minutes.
To the second.
Second.
Um, and I'm gonna make a, well, you weren't here, so I was gonna let you.
What?
No, I was gonna, I was gonna let Brian, I was gonna let Brian vote, but he wasn't there.
I was almost here.
Okay, okay, so. All in favor?
I wasn't. Sorry.
That's right.
Okay. You, you finally got to voting, you know? So moving on to, this is a, this should be a very interesting discussion. Several items. And I would like to begin, if I could, with, um, the third one, the business park item.
Oh, sure.
Because it's really, it just continues on to what we were just talking. So, um, you know, we've been talking a lot about what's happening in the business park and, uh, and the fact that we've got our residential uses happening on the eastern side. There's, there's stuff that might happen up on Low Street, you know, with a youth center and we have a riot in different, of non-industrial uses in the area. So I have, I'm suggesting that we might start considering a new zoning district, which I call Business Park District. And just go through this a little bit, so move one hand. So this is just the sum, um, that you'll, we'll get back to, uh, in more detail later. But the white, uh, purple is the I one district, the darker purple is the I one D district. And after we go through this analysis, you'll see why I suggested creating a new B four district and also rezoning to the northern part, the northern corner of the business park to, uh, to R two, which is the adjoining residential district. So let's move ahead a little bit. Uh, this is focusing in and, and these are the districts, you can see the districts around you. There will be R one district, which is the Aspired Land, uh, peasant land type area. You've got the Residential Two District, which includes uh, the school, the adjoining residences, Summit Guide, and also you have the Heritage House area. And then across the street, you've got R two on the hill. Um, and, and then you've got R three, uh, which I, that I believe is the.
Hillside.
Hillside, property. And then you've got some business districts around here. So, um, moving a little bit ahead. Um, this, this is just a, create a great background, current zoning, we'll be heading. And so I identified a lot of, I mean, you saw a version of this before, a lot of, um, essentially non-conforming type of uses that are, you know, some of the residential, some of the retail, some of the commercial. Uh, move one ahead please. Um, just zooming in, we've got this cluster and it's the same area that we saw before going down with Grab Road and, and then east on Parker Street. But it also includes the, the south side of Low Street as an area that is all really not a business park anymore. Uh, move ahead a little bit, one more slide. So zooming in, um, starting from the left, we've got two churches, two residences, uh, hopefully, uh, youth services, uh, school, National Guard, school on the south side too. On that, the very way. Uh, and we've got a professional office going over there and you can see that, that whole northwest area really relates more to the, the areas across Hale Street and across Low Street rather than to the rest of the industrial park. And they're, they're really separated from the industrial park by that large wetland area. So there's, there's a natural separation that makes sense to, to consider rezoning those areas. And if you move down over toward Grab Road and, and, uh, you pass your way, you've got daycare, you've got a function area at the Elks, you've got the maker space, uh, the metering, the dentist, uh, a real estate office, brewery and pub, uh, and next slide, uh, going even further down, you've got a medical office, a gym, another gym, another brewery and restaurant, professional offices, and then that whole, um, um, what's it called, something, rail, rails in?
Rails ahead.
Rails in, yeah. Uh, with the housing and the restaurant and all sorts of things. So really, uh, doesn't make sense anymore as an industrial district. Uh, so one more slide please. So backing out, that's.
Backing out.
Yeah. And then, and so this is, this is what I had in mind as a suggestion to, um, take that area that's outlined in red and create a new B four business district. And I'm not trying to do anything particular here, but it just seems that this is an area that makes sense. It represents the, the existing, a lot of the existing uses. There are still industrial uses in there, but a lot of the existing uses that have been created either by, uh, non-conformities or by previous variances from used variances were, were still allowed in the city uh, or by the, the, the forty R overlay industry. Uh, sort of created this whole new area that really doesn't relate to the rest of the industrial park. And then that north of the area, uh, I think it should, this outline in yellow, I would suggest should be, uh, rezoned to the R two district. It extends from the, um, the Charter School over to, uh, Hale Street and down a little bit Hale Street to encompass the two churches. And it just seems to make more sense as a residential district than as an industrial district. And then just for simplicity, and I, I don't have a strong feeling about this, but I would suggest combining the I one D and I Y. I don't, you know, like, there's a very few differences between the two.
I, I, I don't think it's a very good reason for having two, yeah.
Yeah. So, so then we can create that as a, like, one just.
Uh, so just to clarify, in this scenario, the forty R district remains as an overlay?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. And, and there's still the potential for extending it a little.
Understood.
Further into the district.
One more time. So, all right, I, I, I was just asking, it's not shown here, uh, quite as well, but the, there's a shading underneath here where the forty R smart grid.
Go to the next slide, it shows the next slide.
Uh, it's a little hard to see, but if I zoom in, you probably can see it. Um, there's a forty R smart grid district where we've seen the Boston Way projects approved and the more recent one on Route One, the Haley's. Uh, and that's within that smart grid district. It allows the multifamily by right pursuant to some state statute and other provisions, uh, but with design review, which is a good thing to have as well. So, um, that's.
And one of the key things about that, yeah, the key thing about that district, which we'll talk about when we get into the next topic, which I would like to be M B T A's of, is that the forty R district allows multifamily uses, right, right. It doesn't require a special permit. Uh, but it does allow us to get design review and site plan. So we still retain some level of, uh, of discretionary review, but just not prohibited use.
Uh, if I could, I, I would say this, uh, that these are very important points, I guess. Um, and irrespective of where we end up in the coming months or here, as we're talking about different areas, different areas of zoning, um, there are some benefits. The state wants us to make more as a right multifamily housing around the train station. That's the key component of what they put forward now. It's different than in some ways of the forty R statute that we permitted the district under originally. In fact, the old district could not be done under the new statute, uh, because it requires a higher percentage of affordable units. Um, and, and that's important context here, I think in part for also other things we'll be discussing here with the M B T A communities requirements going forward, as well as the story avenue area, which we're gonna get to. Uh, because we have to, we have to consider various different things simultaneously, um, and as Rick knows, we talk about this all the time and all the minutia. Um, the, the, we don't necessarily wanna lose the grandfather, uh, status we have for our existing forty R district. The state would actually require, prohibit us from going above ten percent in the affordable housing component now. Whereas the requirement back then for the forty R district was a minimum of twenty percent. So they were setting a floor before, they're setting a ceiling now. Uh, that's lower than that. And we actually decided locally here to go higher than the minimum of twenty percent with the forty R district. So we would be at twenty-five percent, not just to create five percent additional affordable units, but, uh, more particularly, I would like speaking for myself is I thought it was very important for us to try to take advantage of a provision that's in the, um, uh, affordable housing statute whereby if you're not in a, uh, type, if you don't have ten percent of your entire housing stock affordable according to state requirements, uh, putting a debate about what's considered affordable, um, then, um, then you don't, you're not in the so-called safe harbor status. If a developer comes in with an inappropriate forty B and a proposal where it doesn't belong, I'd execute development, um, irrespective of where that may be. Um, while I am very much in favor of affordable housing, I also don't, uh, I'm not convinced that it makes sense that they're all zoning out the window in order to achieve that. Um, context is important as well. So, uh, so that being the case, it's important for us also from a land use planning perspective or a policy perspective to maintain safe harbor status. So, um, so I, I thought it was important, I think I was, uh, too, the council did as well, because, you know, we all did this process of adopting it and we've seen some permits to the project. But we have benefited significantly, uh, in our subsidized housing inventory and getting to or being able to maintain a safe harbor status. Um, because, in recent years, because the forty R just was adopted, because it was adopted with a twenty-five percent requirement and not the twenty percent. Um, and because when M C O has done rental projects, the, the allowances that if twenty-five percent of those units are affordable, which is what our requirement is in the district, the state has a provision that because they wanted to encourage some rental housing, that, uh, if the project is rental, we get credit on the S H I, the subsidized housing inventory for all the units in that building, even though only twenty-five percent are technically affordable. Uh, because they wanted to create also rental housing. So at any rate, um, we've benefited from a number of units in the, in those projects because we're not just getting twenty-five percent of the report, but also all the units in the building because it's a rental project. Um, I think that's beneficial to maintain that. We have the, um, conflict now where the state, you know, is saying with this new change, we're not able to do that. Um, so what I'd like to do is a bureaucratic process I'll have to go through, but I, I, I want to basically show that we, we should not need to prepare a fifty thousand dollar report to show that it's feasible, make it with doing projects that are at that threshold. There's a, uh, expectation that we do a report to show that a performer can be done for a project with twenty-five percent, which is one reason why they went to ten percent. Um, and I, I'll leave it to other communities, the battles they're gonna have to have, but, um, but I want to maintain the protection we have in our forty R district. Um, and then consider what we're doing here as in addition to that, rather than going back and tinging with the forty R district where we might lose some of the, um, benefits we're getting. So that's something to consider in context here, and I apologize for. some of the, um, benefits we're getting. So that's something to consider in context here, and I apologize for segue, but it's important context here, I think, because as we think about what we're doing for changes, uh, we need to think about what we want to use to satisfy MBTA communities and what we want to do to satisfy local zoning needs and, and where, how we draw our map is dependent on some of that. Even Story Avenue may come into play or other areas, uh, as we go over one, they come into play as we think about satisfying the state department, but also having zoning here that is appropriate for Newbury Port, it's just shoving something in there that doesn't belong. Uh, so as we go into the details, I just wanted to note that is something that's a key feature that we want to consider. And the design review component, I think, is essential as well. I, the benefit to me of, of what we're allowing and streamlining as a right multifamily where we might want to allow multifamily, we're maintaining a design review component with some provisions for design, uh, you know, minimal standards and board review, which I think is, is very good to maintain.
So, um, let's, let's move ahead two slides here.
Can I ask a question? Um, as, as a principle, what it, what is, what, do all boats rise in B four? In other words, will all the, um, current uses still exist?
I'm getting there. That's the next one.
Yeah, but, and, and there's a lot of detail, I'm just trying to figure out the principal logic behind it.
So the, the idea here, I think, would be to rezon B four to basically reflect what it is. You know, so it's, so.
So no one gets harmed by.
No one gets harmed, right, right. And, and this is just a, this is a, uh, first stab at it, you know, I think it's, I think we can, if we start working in this direction, we'll be going through the, the use table and the dimensional table and other things to make sure that everything works. But this is just, this is just the concept level right now.
Yeah, yeah.
Is there an aspiration that, that this district becomes a higher density district?
It could be higher density or mixed use.
Height requirements, mixed use.
Yeah, more walkable.
Requires infrastructure and sidewalk and street trees and so the nature of this district is fundamentally different.
Yes, and that would, and so the, the idea about, you, you want to think about, I haven't done anything, any, given any thought to dimensional standards or setbacks or parking requirements at this point. I just want to get the concept out there to begin with, and then we can start thinking about, you know, details if we agree that's the way you want to go.
So, so I would look at that as zoning, zoning housekeeping, right? It's been so long since you
Right.
had all those exceptions, you pull them all together and say, yep, that's the zone, and, and then you can make all the improvements you want.
Because right now, the zone, you know, it's, it's this whole thing with the pickleball and that, uh, we're trying to, trying to get something that kind of reflects the direction the district is going and that we want it to go. If we, the alternate way would be to say, no, we're gonna hold the line, and it's only gonna be industrial from now on. So, you know, it's, it's, so anyway, here's, this is a, this is how I thought about the use table. So we're adding, I would be adding a new, uh, B four district. And then there are things that we could, and we could debate all of these issues. I don't, I don't think any of these uses are, are, um, essential to think about at this point. But for example, we could have, we could allow hotel and if in the business, uh, park. Um, we go to the next, uh, page. So we could allow medical building, medical office buildings and community centers as a right. Uh, where either there's special permit or not permitted right now. Uh, one more. Uh, we could allow retail trade, mixed use, health and recreation, there it is, that was, that was the old use table. We didn't have the separate outdoor and indoor, um, and, you know, professional, social service. Um, those could be all allowed either by special permit or, or as a right, where right now they're either not permitted. But you see, there are very few things that are turning from permitted to not permitted. I guess the one that I got there is kennel and animal boarding. I'm not really sure that fits in with this, but I could be convinced.
I would tend to agree mainly because I, you know, as we think about proximity to residential districts that we're creating, um, I, I would tend to agree that we might want to avoid that.
Yep. One more. Um, restaurants could be allowed, outdoor cafe could be allowed by special permit, and right now we have several restaurants in the district right now. So, uh, we have Netse's and, uh, two group homes. Um, so keep going, yes. Um, here a couple, I would say maybe corporate headquarters and Hillport are not appropriate, um, uh, for that area because it's, because of scale, um, but we would allow accessory retail to, to industrial uses. That's a right.
Uh, then we don't disphenolize that, I mean, the, you're, uh, you're concerned about just the scale of corporate headquarters, yeah.
No, I don't, I don't have a strong feeling one way or another.
Okay.
I mean, it seems to be, what's the difference between a professional office going and incorporated?
Sure.
I think it's just scale.
Sure, yeah, sure, okay.
Marijuana establishment, uh, without retail sale, that maybe is appropriate for, uh, for a business with, you know, great potential against residential uses of it. Uh, so I would take that out of it, but, you know, who knows? Um, do I have another one? Nope, that's it. Yeah, we gotta go back. Go back to residential.
They're not permitting anything except the hotels, so what's the, where's the dental?
So here's where we could, we start thinking about the overlay district, the MBTA community's overlay district.
Right.
I, I, I didn't want to get too far into that at this point.
Yeah.
Because I think we, we're gonna, we're gonna do this all at the same time because we have to get the MBTA community zoning done by December thirty-first next year. So we've got, we, we're gonna, we have.
We're gonna be thinking about the same geographic area, so we'll want to think about what business type uses or industrial type uses we want to change, all the areas that Rick just went through, uh, agree. And, uh, what, what portion of that area do we, or do we not think is appropriate for residential, if there's any extension off the forty R? Towards the business park, what is that, other than saying up Route One or other areas of the city that could be other components of our MBTA?
If you wanted to extend residential along Parker, for example, up the Graff Road.
Yeah. We could.
And that would be a part of the. That would be what, a special permit?
Well, if we do the MBTA's of it, then, yes, right.
It would be akin to the forty R district in some that.
We have to create, we have to create the new MBTA.
Uh, the, the, I don't think the statute forces it to be an overlay underlying the, the, um, I don't recall that being the issue. The, uh, the issue is though, is that we have to allow it within that area as of right. So, uh, the parallel is very much the forty R district in that that is as of right. But the more explicit, um, understanding that we had when they were dealing with forty R going back a couple of years was, um, at least from our end, it was the importance of also having designer view and some parameters for that, not just you can build any, or skyscraper you want. So we had, you know, setbacks of upper floors and things, try to make sure some articulation of the buildings. And we could, I, what I have discussed with folks the last couple of weeks, thinking about, um, the, the parallel from our forty R district is a good template in some ways, we're thinking about Story Avenue changes. You know, there's not a lot, I, I would argue that there's not probably a whole lot of differences in terms of maybe the permitting process we might want to have, or the authority we want to have when we redesign. Some of the height allowances and things like that in general, we could modify those provisions or particulars, uh, to allow height that's appropriate in different areas of a different map or a different area like Story Avenue or, you know, extension of the forty R district decided by MBTA, uh, but they're requiring us to do as of right, and we may also want to streamline as of right areas like Story Avenue to migrate that area into a more mixed use sort of village center type, uh, zoning. Uh, but their benefits of kind of using our forty R district is almost a template for that because we're more into the permitting process, it's recently worked out well thus far in terms of the projects being permitted, I think. Um, we have the, the debate to have about percentage of housing and what, you know, stage of crime and so whatever that if it's in there, uh, with S H I, which is a little bit of a disappointment the way we have to do that now. Um, but I think there's a, a good parallel when we think about these areas, and I would encourage you, like Rick was saying, to think about, uh, the business uses that you think might want to, we might want to change, like Rick was pointing out here. Um, as well as where you think on the map, putting aside, you know, particulars, you know, beyond that, where on the map, where are these street networks? Do you think that it would make sense to allow some of that fifteen unit per acre, you know, as we're gonna get into, you know?
And I think, and I'd like to, again, I'm just, because there's a lot here, because this is the first of three things that we're gonna be talking about. I really just wanted to throw this out to get you thinking about it. And we're gonna have to come back and really look at a, a specific proposal at some point.
So, so, just so we understand and can think about this i- in, in more macro way, I don't think I fully understand what the MBTA.
That's next. Oh, okay.
Yeah, all right.
That's.
Why don't you, you want to go to that or? Good cue.
Thank you. That was great. So, um, so the MBTA, uh, this is a law that was passed, uh, when it due back early, I think, early twenty twenty-two?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And, um, basically what it does is it sets requirements for any community that is served by any aspect of the MBTA system. Or, interestingly, that is adjacent to a community that is served by any aspect of the MBTA system. So applies not just to Newbury Port, but to West Newbury and Amesbury and Salisbury and uh, well, Newbury is served by, as a station, sorry, yeah, but Rowland, it would also serve too. Okay, anyway, just that. The, all these communities that may not even have a MBTA facility, but they're, but they're, they're required. And, and each, each level of MBTA service has a different level of requirement to the community. So we are in the commuter rail, uh, community. So we are required to create zoning districts that allow multifamily housing by right that is equal to at least fifteen percent of the city's existing housing stock. And at a density of at least fifteen units per acre. So it's a, it's a big requirement for us, you know, it's, it's, uh, um.
And, and not in the calculations, the way that the state does calculations for forty R districts, it'd be the way that they develop is a little bit different than, you know, how this is done, but in essence, just for a concept, that district had the presumption that on full buildout, if that district was done at full buildout, you know, that gets out there and we maximize, we would get five hundred and forty units, uh, out of that district, because that's the new units that would go out of the district is the way the state was looking at that, so.
Yeah. So, uh, one thing important to note about this, as I say, there are existing multifamily units count towards the zone capacity. So if we create a district that has five hundred multifamily units in it at fifteen units per acre, they count toward that requirement, even though they're already there. And even though they might not have been allowed as a bright when they were built, we'll rezone them to allow them to exist as a.
Right, that's what they care about is the district that we've zoned, even i- in some ways irrespective of what's there today, almost.
Yeah.
Right? Um, and, and they, they've also pointed out some of the sessions we've had, well, we're not requiring you to, you know, to permit those uses and so forth, but we all know like what zoning is there, so, you know, presumably at least be allowed to permit something. So we think about, you know, the real implications of, you know, adopting zoning.
Well, this is interesting. So they're saying that you have to do twenty percent of it within a half a mile of the MBTA. There's that would be.
Yeah, they, they actually.
I think that's the modifier.
That's the modifier. It used to be a higher percentage, and, uh, they got some pushback from communities who are concerned, but, you know, they, when the statute was done, it gave some latitude to Department of Housing Community Development, which is now a different name. Uh, thankfully, they've, you know, decided to change the name yet again, they just all the time. So, um, at any rate, they were given to determine what's reasonable, you know, density and all this kind of stuff. So, uh, some of that has been the application of regulations by D H C D, not the state legislature, which set up a basic framework or umbrella. Uh, that was pushed forward with a bunch of other stuff at the time. Um, but recognizing this problem of housing needs and a lot of other things were going on, you know, that was thrown in there. And so that got passed, and now we're dealing with more particular requirements from D H C D, which is what is summarized here, and so.
I guess what I'm suggesting though is that, uh, it doesn't seem like there's that corridor, the availability of that corridor around the MBTA, given the wetlands, the territory, you know.
This, this was the kind of, I mean, e- even to get to this twenty percent, that was the kind of stuff that was being pointed out by communities was you can't necessarily do what you're asking, you know, and it's in some ways disproportionate or unreasonable for communities to absorb X, Y, Z. It was that type of feedback the state was getting that resulted in some.
But actually, it's actually, it's not as unreasonable when we go through this. So, yeah, so the, so our requirements, we have to provide zoning, zoning for twelve hundred ninety-two units as a right.
Okay.
And we have to provide at least thirty-five acres of zoning.
So these are separate requirements, right?
Yeah, right. So if you only provide that thirty-five acres, then you've got a density of thirty-six point nine units per acre. So we're not, we're gonna have to provide more than thirty-five acres because we're not gonna be at an average of thirty-six, because this is a total density. So if you have, if you imagine in an area that has streets going through it, those streets still count. So it's not the density of the lots, it's the density of the lots plus the streets. So it's even, so lots are even higher than us.
Our forty R district is about forty unit per acre requirement or allowance, so just like comparison.
Yeah. And so, so we need to have twenty percent of the, of the district within a half mile. But, so that's only seven acres. And what do we have in income? We probably have all.
Right, so.
We've already taken care of it.
We, so, uh, I've used this word before, it's not my favorite word to use here, but the best way I can describe it is almost to satisfy the state, um, and I would show the objectives, I think, are good, you know, creating the housing, streamlining permitting for an appropriate way, while I think maintaining designer view is something that the context is important. Um, we, we can essentially gerrymander the map, if you will, to take advantage of the right area. So essentially encourage the development that we want. And what we're trying to do is essentially develop the zoning we think is appropriate for Newbury Port while meeting the state's requirements, and if you're fulfilling some of our local objectives, we'll still meet their requirements. So we're not, uh, penalized by the state for anything, we're not fined, you know, we'll see where that goes, but also we're to remain eligible for grant programs, which is something else that's come up that we don't comply, so.
Right. So we move to another slide. Okay, so here's our, it's in red, uh, it's the half mile radius from, it's like here you have a rail station. And, um, so already in that radius, we've got the three Minko projects. We've got the Heinz Wave project, uh, off Parker Street. And we've got the Hillside Center. So those are all multifamily projects. I don't know whether they whether all of them will comply with the density, and Hillside probably doesn't. Uh, I mean, Heinz Wave probably doesn't. But, um, but there are always some multifamily units in this, this half mile radius. Um, some considerations are, um, we, we don't want to hurt the business park by replacing everything with housing. Um, although we may want to have some, some areas that convert to housing. Uh, the courthouse isn't going away probably, so that's not gonna get converted to multifamily. Uh, there's water and wetlands everywhere, and there's cemetery, you know, big cemetery with half mile radius. So that kind of constrains what we can do to. Uh, the next slide. Uh, this is the, uh, a better view of the existing smart grid district that we have right now. And, um, we have two hundred and forty-two uses that have been permitted to date. They have a net density of thirty-eight units per acre. That's net density, it doesn't include the streets and everything. So the actual density is, is lower. And, and it's a, so it's twenty-five percent, what's twenty percent?
Twenty-five percent, right, right. And that, that's the one thing that I, you know, I would be reluctant, I don't think we want to walk away from, we're gonna be in our district, which means not tinkered with that area.
Yeah, add, add a new district.
Right, right.
Okay, next slide. So this was a concept that I came up with last year to say, well, this is one way we could do part of it. So we could draw a long district along the rail trail. And we pick up River's Edge, we pick up Foundry, we pick up the condos on Wood River Street, we can pick up Hillside. Uh, there's no little, um, condo development on Route One, the three Minkos. Uh, so that blue outline, uh, they have right there, um, has about four hundred and fifty existing in the food, multifamily dwellings.
It's a bit of a gerrymander, you know.
Yeah, it's a gerrymander, but the, but the order said, you know, law says you can use existing pedestrian bicycle access to a transit station. And, you know.
The whole corridor.
Yeah, and the majority of that district is within a half mile of the, uh, of the, of the MBTA station. So, you know, that takes care of, you know, more than a third of our, of our requirement just by doing that. That, that's a, that's an easy thing to do.
Right.
Um, and you just create an overlay district and, you know, uh, and again, I think Andy was trying to say this, you, you create an overlay district because then it's easy to impose the, uh, design standards and, and, and special site plan standards, rather than creating an existing district and everything, housing and non-housing comply with that. So, so it takes us a good part of the way. Okay, so next. So, uh, and this, I just want to conclude with a couple, a few things. Now, what's fifteen units per acre? So this is our twentieth breaker on, uh, on Washington Street, on the North, the North Street. Uh, you know, it's a, it's a traditional apartment development, so it doesn't have to be, you know, high ones, it can be, um, fairly, fairly traditional and developed. Next one. Um, this is the River's Edge. Uh, this is exactly the density that, that the law calls, so this is, you know, we could, we could have more of this. And the next one, uh, the Foundry Square, uh, uh, on Merrimack Street. Um, again, fifteen units per acre. So this is, this is kind of thing we could be doing. Uh, we could do, we could do wider scale too, we could do things that are more like the Minko projects. But we could probably do, um, rate zoning that allows this kind of density. So, uh, and then.
The scale of these, I think, is more appropriate to Newbury Port.
Yeah, right.
Agreed.
Okay, so the last thing is, uh, the Story Avenue, um, and before we get into this, um, I just want to say, you know, this is, I, I think actually you should probably introduce this because of the grant issue.
Sure, uh, I, I think I mentioned it briefly at a prior meeting, yeah, and I apologize if I did, but, um, so we applied for a grant, um, I had talked with customer quality, uh, who was earlier to say about um, rezoning the Story Avenue area, um, you know, this graphic is just meant to depict it was used for the grant, just to illustrate that we have these basically what I would consider three primary nodes of the city. There's our village centers, if you will. Um, one is the downtown, obviously, we all recognize that, that's the primary. Uh, but we have our evolving forty R district, and we see, you can see a little bit of that with Boston Way and the Route One Haley's project, what that might look like in the coming years. Um, creating kind of another node down there. And then we have the Story Avenue area. Uh, one thing I would also say with this that I've come up a little bit more recently, some of my data that folks, but, um, I also feel that this is some ways, uh, of, of, of meeting other requirements we have in the city economic development, new housing needs. um I also feel that this is some ways uh of of meeting other requirements we have in the city economic development, new housing needs. Uh meeting the state's requirements and so forth, but also to some degree also alleviating some of the infill pressures elsewhere in the city by creating those housing units and those options. Not to push them off in a corner, but they may actually be appropriate locations where we want to encourage that type of um change, those type of changes, um and that walkability and mixture of uses, so to speak, so. I would, I tend to look at the sort of three primary areas with that, plus the the fourth uh area I call that was the business park, it's a key employment center. And I think there's some good, um you know, something good about those being, you know, proximal to each other, so. Uh so I think that's um how, generically, how I look at this. Going from there, calling out just the the sort of districts that are involved, you know, business industrial, you know, uh different type of business, B one versus B two and B three for the downtown, um but this is just an era photograph of that story avenue area, and the thought process in general, um it was that we could basically take advantage of some changes akin to, if you will, looking at what we've done with forty yard district. Changing this area, um thinking about buildings facing the street, you know, something what feels like Newbury Court, buildings facing the street. Three-story buildings, maybe an upper step, you know, start back of upper levels if you have, thinking about where we might have some of that, but essentially redeveloping over time. Allowing this area to be redeveloped as a mixture of housing and uh commercial uses, more akin to what we have uh in these other areas we're developing, where it's a multi-story building, there's housing, residential above. Some of the walkable shops below, there's walkability, there's, you know, connectivity between the sites, the stuff that we look for in the forty yard district. Um you'll notice here that there are, uh it is an area here. Uh I I primarily think that the majority of benefit we would get out of something like this would be a wholesale change long term to the Port Plaza area. Market basket and so forth, right, evolving, that is something that feels like it's a gateway, so to speak, to Newbury Court, as opposed to just strip mall anywhere. Um if you think of like the Institution for Savings Bank uh building right at the corner there, that I feel like is a is a good, you know, at least architectural representation of what we would want maybe for folks to see when they come into Newbury Court. We don't have a whole lot of examples of that in that area right now, but we're sort of hopefully starting to change some of that. This could help us to get some of that there, uh there is also some interest in um in sort of this quarter of the the sort of area that I've highlighted. In this corner of having some houses potentially that you talked about, the Kmart site as being something that's vacant, and that might be a potential there, so. Uh there may be a line made up some good things for the city and thinking about it this way. The other area, the other thing to call out here is it's the sub-area B, as I call up the grant purposes, but uh this is the area that we don't control, the C and J parking lot, right, lot, so to speak, but um it's underutilized to a degree. Uh we could debate whether some of that remains parking, uh or, you know, a transit sort of component in there. But whether or not it is retained as just a service parking lot, uh may not be the highest best use, and uh the Lieutenant Governor had mentioned um in one of the things that was at like right out of when they first came into office, that if there were any um municipal state properties that we thought could be put to better use, particularly for housing, then we should let them know. Uh it happened to be, I think it was a day ago, uh the mayor had a discussion with Lieutenant Governor, and I think we'll be following up on that, something like that discussion was good, so. Um we put together some bullets for that, so I, it sounds like that will be a productive discussion, at least initiated that, that would be a bureaucratic process to mobilize a transition of land here. Uh in any way, but uh but that happening may also give us.
Who owns that again?
This is, sorry, this is Matthew T uh in property, yeah, Matthew T. Um but in order to get through the bureaucracy of either the state making it available for something else, which I will go over with you on. We, that may take a little more time than something like this, where it's just local private folks who own the property and we.
We've already had an effort at the train station.
Correct, correct, and 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 I think we're, we may have a good timing for this to be looked at, you know, favorably, and I don't, I didn't pull up a visual for this, but if you can all kind of imagine driving in the Newbury Court and seeing that large wall. I mean, the meteor action I have to that, just thinking, you know, visually is put a parking deck back against the wall. Put a nice set of buildings essentially fronting on there, and what you're seeing as you come to Newbury Court is is more traditional kind of Newbury Court feel, if you will. And that might also set the stage for, that might be the front piece and sort of people are saying here over time. Uh we could maintain the transit component, we might have remains of parking on site and so forth, but it may be a combination of things, not just that. Um Jennifer and I have talked a little bit, and I, she had to drop off, I think, but we have talked generically about the fact that probably this section of the corridor here, which you're thinking about the gas station, the Dunkin' Donuts, whatnot. You know, I don't think the gas stations are gonna change anytime soon, they're reasonable to have next to the highway, and they're likely to, you know, do well. Uh I think the the bigger bank for our budget more likely and something that changes will be these larger areas where there's parking lots and and so forth. This is a little tighter sites to work with, so whatever they call it, leave it together, a removed site uh uses, they're already doing relatively, you know, these well businesses. So uh so I've imagined that over time, we're gonna get more bang for our bucks, so to speak, of the changes here, but that gateway, essentially this quarter coming in could become more like you're arriving in Newbury Court, you know, before you even get to High Street. Um and and that's what I think we're sort of looking at here is um a grant to use for rezoning between now and June of next year, put together something, it doesn't need the council to adopt, but try to bring that forward, and we may want for other reasons to be able to mobile silently something faster, or, you know, more slower. Uh but that's what the grant allows us to do, is uh some consultant services to assist the relatively limited staff we have in the office to do various things. Um it's also great to have someone like Rick as the chairman of, for, you know, planner professionally, but um but uh this gives us some additional resources, and one of the things I think, and that's why I keep pointing back to the forty yard district, because it's something that works for various reasons, and we've had some experience with. Um it could be any other model or examples like that that we pull from, or uh or pull pieces up into this. Um but we're familiar with that, just the benefits that come out of it, and um and uh there has been some interest in, uh like I said, in specifically in multifamily housing being permitted in here that might align well with this.
And there are lots of ways to do, you could do this, you you wouldn't want it, the property owners would get very nervous if you started playing around with the underlines on it. But you could do it by adding an overlay system, um that allows housing to be inserted. You could do it by creating a special, a new special permit use that allows something to happen, putting otherwise be in our district. So the idea is about expanding the range of opportunities that are available, rather than becoming more strict.
There is a uh, and if you don't mind, back to that screen.
Oh, yeah.
I think the uh, there's an owner of the, where Haji's is, of a big chunk of land there. At at one point, they were considering quitting housing. What was the impediment?
Yeah, there was an old forty B concept years ago.
Yeah.
That was down here, um that has been largely abandoned, I think that's um, that's mainly, there's a lot of wetlands down there. Uh and they were essentially trying to snake a roadway through to get, I wasn't here at the time, but I've seen the plans and what, well, so there's, there were a couple of larger buildings being proposed on a long road, and they were trying to sneak it through the wetlands to get as much as they could in there. Um you know, that got abandoned, but there is currently um potentially on the table in the the coming year. Maybe a concept or something over sort of like the Haji's end of that site, not as far back into the woods and possibly conserving land. Which, to me, could be beneficial to this overall scheme, sort of fronting on the street, keeping the development up there for them by the street. Um and actually, I would say parallel to these other pieces that we've had in recent years over here, uh from a back of Ollie Woods, which is off the screen here, but when that extension of the Russell um, starts the extension when that Ollie Woods product was done. Uh there was open space preserved back here down at the bottom of the screen, and same thing happened when Tropic Star came in and did the CBS, and we got more land preserved back right back here, which I think is good as well for various reasons. Uh but clustering that development towards the street, making this the housing and the mixed use, the walkability. And then keeping all that as preserves open space is also a somewhat common theme that we have here in Newbury Court, I think a good thing to want to do. So to me, a good thing that might be as part of that project is uh the multifamily housing, you know, sort of towards the street. But the preservation of a chunk of land at the back, which I think could be a great overall mixture for that side of the street, so.
And and to that point, you might, you might want to change the zoning requirements to a more density at the front of the site. They've changed your preserving.
And I, and one thing I would also, Jennifer and I had also talked about this too, because it's one of those things I think about, what we we think about with the forty yard district, I ended up, I pulled up the graphic here, but um Rick mentioned earlier that on on the, if you think of um the Route One Corridor, and uh I can go back to the ground, I want just worry people, but on Route One, um if you look at the um the Kelly's Hardware sort of area. That side of the forty yard district was uh put to a lower height allowance uh in the forty yard district to sort of be compatible with as a transitions up the State Street. Um and um if you think about that, and you also think about in the forty yard district, we allowed a fifth floor additional height near the transition right along that corridor, but not further out, as a sort of a stepping transition. I would, I think that we also need to think about where do we draw those lines or boundaries here, so to me, there's a map that accompanies this area, just like there was with the forty yard district, that says, well, you might have things like you could do a fifth floor sort of setback in the site here. But we may not, for instance, if you if you think about that Kmart uh side of the building here, near the street on Mo Street. You may not want a five-story building right against the street there, because that's gonna feel like a six to seven, you know, story tall building, and that, you know, grading that is on. So, for instance, we might have a setback, and you know, you can do your fifth floor if you want, but it's gonna be this board back, so as we think about where it might be reasonable to have three, four, or five stories, whatever that may be. Um you know, I I tend to agree, you know, like like Bob said, I tend to agree there's a certain scale and sort of character we want to maintain, and that's the piece that I feel that the pedestrian should always feel, generally. Uh but I also don't have a problem with, you know, necessarily having that variety of height, you know, and that could be beneficial both from an economic development perspective or a developer's perspective for, you know, uh their performance, and it can be compatible because it can sort of fit in there in a way that doesn't uh work for the pedestrian. Depending on where it is located or allowed, so that's something that we can look at as we, as we come out as well. Do you have this grant? Were you awarded this grant? So, sorry, yeah, we got this grant, um this, we have to go through a bureaucratic process, but so the the city council has to accept grants, so we sent the grant to the um city council, or I'm hoping on the twelfth, they'll take that up in committee, and then on the sixteenth, we'll be, they'll approve that, meaning we can uh get the contract to the state execute and get going on, uh sorry, the.
And we have to finish it by June thirtieth.
By June thirtieth, yeah, um so.
So, are you done with that that part of it?
Yeah, sorry.
Can we just do the the images then, because this was um, this is something I've I've had for ten or fifteen years. But just thinking about how you think about converting a strip corridor into a more mixed use uh type of area. Um this is, this is actually an example, I don't actually have current pictures of it, but this was one of those being planned. Uh there's a, there was a shopping center on Route One in Portsmouth called South Gate Plaza, and um the the retail developer partnered with a housing developer to add um a housing component in there, so. The these are, there's this, the kind of greenish building on the left, uh and the white building on the right are all kind of, I think the white building on the right was um Ocean State Job Lot or or something like that, and one on the left was a grocery store, and they were able to add uh fit in a residential component, so it became more um mixed use, and they've actually now turned a movie theater into a second uh residential building, so um that's, you know, that's a, an example of what can be done, I'll go ahead.
Hey, so, sorry, yes, I'm, sorry.
Yeah, I have actually a a perfect example of what I think you're trying to do, if you've been there, um the New Balance Factory in Alston, they built up an entire corridor around a stop and shop of buildings like this, and there's a bowling alley, and there's this walkability area, and it's absolutely gorgeous.
Yeah, there's some more, I've got some more pictures.
Okay, that's another one, yeah. Yeah, I I should know if I didn't mention with the grant, part of the, the assumption with the grant was a couple of things, uh a minor component, if so to speak, is just confirming, because we're talking about, you know, fair amount of build out or any growth, right, and how that fits in. Uh I do want to verify that we're having a, you know, a a responsible, from a planning perspective, discussion about infrastructure, just making sure that at least our plants can deal with the additional growth, that we're calculating that, you know, having a fair discussion about that. Uh making sure that that's not an issue per se, that's a, you know, planning one-on-one. Uh but let's confirm that, then there's the zoning language and components themselves, what the consultant might help with with that, beyond any we're doing. Uh but also I think some of these visuals, and so beyond anything, because Rick and I both collected all these things, you know, something you do too, but we collect these things, and so I say, here's a good example of this, and it can be applied here, but uh but they can also help us to sort of plot down in there almost like a three D sort of model, and kind of help folks to visualize that as we're discussing it. Um some, a little bit of that was done with with various sketches before my time, when the um old uh Transfer Development Rights uh district was being discussed around the train station, it became essentially a different format, it's forty R, uh years later when I got here, but uh but that, that, there's illustrations done at that time that helped to illustrate what that could look like, I think a very good sort of example of, you know, the type of buildings that we expect to see in Newbury Court, so.
So we can just go through these pretty quickly, um so these are, there, this company Urban Advantage does a lot of visualization. It's the used to fifteen or twenty years ago, and these were done, um so these are just examples, so this, you know, it's a common commercial strip type of area. And then the next step is, you know, thinking about how you fill that in, and those those empty spaces and adding um you know, buildings that are, that adds some sense of place to it.
It takes time, because.
So your zoning would allow that building down, and the next piece is how you add the crosswalks and um your pedestrian facilities and so forth, we got.
Planning Board does that during the plan review process, as far as the plan review, the site plan review process, as well as the architecture, and then as we work with the state in our own right of way. We deal with those improvements within the right of way, so.
Then the last point I want is, um just you're working, adding more buildings, filling, filling them more.
So look at the comparison between that structure parking and that. Right, right.
So the next one, I think, is actually even more relevant to what we're talking about, so um you've got this gas station. And no sidewalk, and no landscaping, and everything, so the next step, the first step might be, you know, the city comes in and does some public infrastructure, and there was somebody, somebody did something, adding trees, adding sidewalks, adding better lighting, um you know, extra crosswalks and so forth. And the next piece is, you know, converting the the gas station maybe to some type of mixed use development. And then um what will be next? Oh, I guess it's, oh, that maybe that was the last one now. So, some real life examples, um I don't know that anybody's been to Nashville Commons on the Cape. But it's a, an old strip mall, it looks kind of familiar there, and it now is a really walkable uh kind of uh mixed use community, it's got, it's got every type of use in it, um next one.
This is the comparison I would make, and as I visualize like the Port Plaza area, and you can even visualize whether this is like a, you know, it could have like a, a sort of a third floor. It could be something very, so it's akin to this slide.
Yes, yeah. Um so that's what, that's what it looks like, you know, there's a, they they took this strip plaza and they created internal streets. And, you know, it's still a auto-oriented place, it's got tons of parking spaces uh all around it. But the the core of it is really a walkable uh mixed use kind of space from the originals, it's all built around the originals, super. Next one, so this is a view, that that Y'all Building. This is, yeah, yeah, we are going to.
But, you know.
Been going on since nineteen eighties.
Uh maybe nineteen ninety, it's a little shorter.
Yeah, early nineties, yeah.
It's a, a longer, yeah, I had, I had friends who've worked on this.
Yeah.
Long time, and it's, it's a very successful.
Yeah, yes, it's wonderful, yes, next one. So it's, you know, it's like a, it's a, it's a really a very, it's kind of a downtown Newbury Court kind of place, but it's. Okay.
The the Hingham Shipyard is a long.
Yeah. So then, uh this, that's, this is just another extension of Nashville Commons, a later expansion of it. Uh this is actually a kind of an interesting place, it doesn't really totally apply because it's off the road. But it's uh, it's called Southern County Commons, the village of Southern County Commons, and um it basically has that nice mixed use center that ends in a a roundabout. And uh kind of commercial uh ground floor retail, restaurants, upper floor offices and educational uses. And then it's surrounded by uh different types of residential uses, and down to the lower center is the one big piece, which is the movie theater. But it go a little bit further than that, um that's, that's sort of what it looks like uh from the air, the core of it. And then, next one. Yeah, that's, that's what the kind of places looks like, yeah, it's not as, as wonderful as Nashville Commons, but it really still has a lot. And then the last example is this place that I visited, Minneapolis, one side of Minneapolis, called Excelsior in the Grand. Um because that happened to be the names two streets across, and it was a total wasteland, a commercial strip. And they, you can see they created six hundred forty four dwelling units, sixty-five thousand square feet of retail, a whole bunch of on-street and structured parking, and a public park, park and happy, but uh next one. So the upper right is what it looked like before, the lower right is what it looks like now, um it's a little bit different. Uh and it's, it gets, it's, it's much denser than the other ones I was showing. But it shows you how you could, uh you know, get the same type of mixed use in. This actually has a Trader Joe's, I believe it's that building we're seeing on the lower right with the underground parking garage, that's part of it, it's just really very nice, uh next one. There's more of it, uh before and after.
That was.
That's the last one, okay, good. So this, those are just ideas before, you know, we could look at a whole range of things for what we, what we do in the story of. One of the other things they just did, if if those latest changes in the regulations was to specifically allow mixed use. And in the N D T A community study, they're specifically allowing mixed use as part of it, which they didn't allow before, so it's, it's really good. So uh that's a lot to to go through, um but I just wanted to throw it all out there. And, you know, suggest that we start thinking about this, you know, we have to go through the N D T A stuff. And we have to go through the story avenue aspect because of your grant. So we might as well be doing all of this together and try to connect it to be a big package sometime this spring.
Yeah, and um again, like I said, there's um, there's various different considerations, unfortunately, the difficulty is there's various different considerations simultaneously, some of it might be relatively straightforward, like from my view, there's a very strong parallel between the forty yard district, we use the same framework, we use some of the same parameters, we can, you know, modify up that. Um however, there's this difference between the forty R, you know, allowances and the mandate from, you know, for the ten percent, and whether or not we're able to take credit for things on the subject of his housing inventory. There are pros and cons to different things, so whether or not, for instance, we wanted to include areas over here as part of our MBTA community's requirements. You know, brings up other questions like, well, we can't use it to do twenty-five percent, we'd only be able to do ten percent, or at maximum twenty percent, this is like a, another threshold you can get to, but you can never get to twenty-five percent uh the way that the regulations are set up. uh the way that the regulations are set up right now. So uh we would not be able to do the exact same thing we're doing with our forty yard district if we are doing it under MBTA communities. So it's a little bit different as we think about our, the pros and cons of various pieces and sort of, you know.
And I think we need to think about what we need to do to get to basic compliance with the MBTA communities. And then we can go beyond that. So we can allow as a right what we need to do to comply with MBTA communities and then have a special permit to go beyond that. So if you want to build and uh you know, you build a fifteen units acre, it's gonna have to be more than fifteen. You want to build a twenty units acre, you have the growth estimate. Um you can do it by right, but if you want to build at thirty years, I don't think of thirty to forty. Then we can do that by special permit and then we can apply the, the higher, you know, higher rate. So we've done a zoning that allows it as a right to meet the MBTA communities, but they say we can go up and above and beyond that. If you wanted, if you could do a lot of these other things for us. So, you know, this is.
I assume there's a demonstration we have to give to the MBTA requirement.
Yeah, they give, you have to basically give them a bunch of data to show and then they analyze it themselves. They look over to say like, did you meet the fifteen units per acre? Did you meet the air requirement?
So that would speak to your advice, right? Here's where it is, here's we could see it.
So we could, we could do that first.
Yeah.
And then.
Yeah.
Go beyond that.
Yeah.
Because we may not get, we may, we may allow fifteen units per acre on, on uh the Kmart site and the owner may say that's not working to me.
Right.
But but as long as we can, you have to require it.
Right, right, exactly. So we, it, there's different things we're trying to achieve or deal with, right? Simultaneously, we need to decide how do they all put together which one, you know, which, which is the main thing in some certain situations, which is the priority issue we're trying to address. So, yeah.
Um any, any thoughts? This is a lot to go through.
Do folks want to digest this and then maybe at the next meeting, circle back and give feedback about, you know, anything you're thinking here?
Or it would be most useful.
Yeah.
How, how do you distribute that information?
I mean. This, like this. So I'm actually, I'm gonna be preparing a package for the city council where it's a little awkward timing, because the council is also dealing with short-term rent units. There's a hope that they'll be able to finish that process maybe uh this time around, because that's gone on for like a two and a half years over. Um but in any way, um my, I, I think what we're doing is ramping up for a more formal presentation. Materials to run through, you know, the basic requirements, but also to run through look at our new report zoning map, look at the context of our neighborhoods, here are a couple of options, pros and cons of various things, like Rick has shown with that, that Jerry Mendron sort of district, you know. Here are some of the options available to us in the spectrum, taking it a little further than just the basic requirements drawn on the slide. And then walking through and hopefully, you know, an exciting point even getting, you know, a little bit further down the road into before we all waste a bunch of time and a bunch of hearing, you know, public hearing processes and formalities. Um giving a concept that's reasonably, you know, uh in in the right ballpark. Having a discussion of that spectrum there uh on the map, looking at the various details and then diving into, you know, the more formal process, but um I'd like to have some more informal sort of discussions about this stuff. Um trying to get ourselves on the same page overall before we're doing a formal process, spending months on end debating over line by line edits and in ordnance and then let's agree with the overall framework and, you know, all this first and then drill down into those details for the package that could be brought forward. So I would say over the sort of fall, winter season, you know, and early the next year, expect that to be sort of ramping up as like, you know, involve discussion. Um you know, and and there is pieces of this going from initial presentations like this into full blown, you know, here's our sections, here's what we're thinking about for the height allowances, here's a map that shows about those setbacks might apply, you know, that kind of stuff.
Are these available to us?
Uh we can post these. Uh yeah, we, we, Rick, sorry, we can just, we can post these.
Excellent.
And what is the timeframe for the MBTA communities?
You have to have a, a proof plan by the end of next year.
By December thirty first of next year. And it's, it's done differently by uh like this year and the end of this year is a requirement for those that are sort of closer, they have the actual subway as opposed to the MBGA commuter rail. Uh so they have an earlier time frame.
So December twenty twenty four.
Twenty twenty four.
But the zoning has to be adopted by.
Right, right.
That means we have to be done a lot of that by June.
And you send the story out, the consultant work has to be done.
Well, the grant, the grant funds that are utilized have to be used by June. Um and uh, yeah, so.
It's, it seems, you know, six or eight or nine months seems like one time.
That's a little sense.
I'm already nervous.
So I mean, it, it actually is, this could be actually fun because, you know, so much of our work is reviewing applications for special permits and site plans. This would be actually be real bad.
Right, real advanced plenty of thinking about how do we want to change an area and then how do we apply that in regulations to think and result in permits or applications that are brought before you, like the ones that we've seen. You know, particularly in the forty R, but some other places like that where we've seen a wholesale change done to an area, so.
So, so Andy, I know this is not a public meeting or a public hearing, but we have a, a, a very a former planning board chair here, I don't know whether she has anything she would like to say about this.
Yeah, very welcome.
I appreciate hearing the whole story and seeing everything coordinated. Uh I think that makes a whole lot of sense. You know, what you're already working with in the, in the industrial business.
And you were involved with the forty yard district for sure, so you've seen, you know, the whole process, so.
Yeah. Uh no, I'm here primarily because I'm also with uh Newbury Court Louisville Streets. And we're looking at providing some input to the Story Avenue project from our perspective. I think we, so a few of the comments we've already made to Andy came um out of zoning, but I think we're gonna back off any of that and just focus on what our expertise is and what we're concerned about. Because we're really an advocacy and an education group. You have two members here already involved in it, Rick. Um but um I had taken this on as a project for us with their, their backing. So that's what we'll be trying to contribute as recommendations right into the process of, of the design. You know, the, the consultant design work. And then hopefully, if there's anything we can provide in, in terms of the public hearings, we'd be glad to do that as well.
Definitely, you know, certainly advocacy is your support for those components that are ready for the changes. Um and you know, within our forty yard district, we only have a, a limited number of standards in there, but the idea there is we could go back and modify our forty yard district or other areas, but we, we may want to change the parameters. We may want to increase the number of light racks they provide for, you know, versus cars, you know. We can do things like that, so that, you know, in line with that. Part of what we tried to start with with the forty yard district and again, other areas we want to do, I think similarly is trying to make sure when everybody's, I mean, somebody is building a development, particularly in an area where it's going to have residents or, you know, multiple mixed use as opposed to say they've had the business park or just trucks going in and out. You want to have sidewalks, you want to have connectivity. So we tried with the projects thus far in the forty yard district and through the regulations and then a permit review process underneath them. Um to compel the developers to put that as part of their project. So you have this plaza next to the rail trail. A little bit of retail component to it, make it more active and vibrant. Um that's the kind of stuff along with the design review. It's not just the building, it's also the site and the way it connects people and makes it and not so much dependent on the automobile. And that's, I think, Louisville Streets and that, that component is very important to this as well. So if there are specific standards either for the architecture or for the site, do you think we should look at modifying or some particular right out there and we'll think about whether or not we can put that in there or it makes sense to tweak something uh or add a new provision that we don't currently have.
There is one point that hasn't been brought up yet, and I think you should keep that also in mind. And this is the concern, I've forgotten where it's come from, but the, again, just focusing on Story Ave. That it not be created in a way that it becomes competition for downtown. I know that's all in the eyes of the holder. But if we focus or you focus more on the residential component with the mixed use retail commercial more for that village, using some of the examples that you saw up there. I think that will fly a lot better through the council and with the general public than trying to offer an alternative to downtown boutiques or something like that.
Yeah.
Um you can't control who goes in there other than um one thing that we had suggested, just because we, I had had that experience before with the forty yard district. Um is the um the square footage for retail. If you limit that, I know you were talking about uh a minimum and I was talking about a maximum.
Yeah.
But the reason for that is that if you keep it within certain parameters, it works out to attract use, uses that fit with your, your um objectives of keeping that as a village. But that's, that's not a Louisville Streets comment, that's, that's, I need more members comments.
Okay, thanks. So anything else on this before we?
Uh, no, I don't think I have. I don't think anybody wants to.
Well, uh I think it's really interesting stuff.
Yeah, I, I would say, you know, again, other than reaching out offline, of course, which is always welcome. Um you know, if you want to digest and then maybe we circle back and get if anybody has any sort of follow thoughts. I mean, look at the provisions, the design standards in the forty yard district that we have, you know, online and see if there's something in there that you could add or change. Um you know, is there anything about the permit process you've seen today, you know, whether you've been involved indirectly or indirectly? Um any thing about the permit process you would change? You know, we have to figure out how that fits in there. That's another piece that, you know, because he has a right to put it, but it's, but um permit process, design standards for the buildings or the sites, let us know what those thoughts are, so we can think about how they might fall in.
And you know, like Charlie said, we have, there are other examples. If there are other examples of places that look like they would really work well for Story Avenue.
Yes, uh the graphic examples of those locations, if you want to give us, you know, this building's that address in whatever town, you know. Send us a snap, send us a reference, because we've got a million examples of ourselves, you know, that we come, you know. But the more of those that we find that are closely aligned here, the better it is, uh because we can illustrate exactly what we're aiming for, we can make sure the regulation parallel with that, but we can also illustrate for folks what the beneficial changes are over time for the community uh by adopting the zoning changes. So it, it doesn't matter what random, you know, thing is just set it away and uh we'll add it to the possibilities of the visual we're showing or if, you know, examples that we use for applying.
Anything else or any other updates?
Thank you. Uh short-term ideas to think, discuss more and I, the capital. Um I unfortunately have to catch it remotely, so I'll be hoping to get good audio. I can hear it remotely what's happening, but um uh Jennifer, I will be catching it. Legal council will be, uh our new legal council will be sitting on that. And we'll see where the council goes, but um hoping that the ninth, ninth, ninth time is a charm.
And they need to get it done by?
Uh November fourteenth. Um God, maybe we should have to have another, another.
Well, they do it again, it's the new city council.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, um.
Thanks for doing that, Rick, so. Good work.
Does anybody have anything to raise before we close for the night? You were very quiet, Heather.
I just couldn't hear.
She's got me masked from here on out.
Your thing, yeah.
I'll be Jim.
No.
All favor return?
Challenge.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
And you see how easy the voting is when it's.